And they're not fools. They know exactly where we are most of the time.
So, a question for you. I remember probably just before the pandemic, we started having all of the rubber marks all over the roads and getting game cameras and other things. Have we had any luck with any of those, or is there something better that we should be trying to similar to be able to capture some of this?
Game cameras work great until nighttime. And we got on film a number of burnouts. The problem is at night those game cameras shoot in black and white, and if the guy's got his brake lights on, it's so bright you can't read the license plate. And it's hard to distinguish. How to put a game camera close enough to the road so you get a good positive ID. If we get a license plate, and worst case scenario, we can contact motor vehicle and say, "This is the vehicle that did it." They'll yank the plates off the vehicle, which hurts as much as then now that you don't have the vehicle to drive. But game cameras work great during the daytime. We've got good pitches during the day, but not that good at night.
So, I know one of the things that's commonly done on, say, a highway is they'll have a distance keeper line and then be able to record it with video. Would that be good enough evidence for you to actually submit something without being there, or not?
I think for the equipment to do that, it's going to be expensive. Most of the lines that you see painted on the roads, that's for the airplane, for the aircraft, because he'll use a stopwatch. And they've accepted that, because these guys do it. That's what they do every day. But it's hard for us to, I don't know how we'd sit through a stopwatch and head better off with a radar gun. Now I got to have some positive speed. Did I answer any questions? Anybody have questions that I can answer?
Do we have any public comment on this? Please step on up and go ahead.
No, I have already gone, so I can't. I'm talking from a mail carrier point of view. And the new vehicles don't have rear windows. They're now owned by a post office, big vans. But when I was for years delivering that route, starting at the top, going towards Conto, but you got Roby Road down the bottom. If I was making a right turn into Roby Road, I'd have people come flying behind me. When I'm coming out, you know, it doesn't take very long for a car to be at the top of the hill and then boom. Now, the distance also goes all the way to Tanner and McCormick over on that other. So, it's an elongated S-turn. Same thing there. I've almost been smashed by a tractor trailer coming each way at the same time. That's why we moved Foxes in. But that area, if you're going to make it slower, you need to include that other, that other turn over by Tanner's corner. It's dangerous.
The top section, I think, is all rating mark and a thirty for caution, correct?
Coming from Lockington, yeah, that way, yes. I don't recall if there's a, I don't think there's a sign going towards Lockington, other than forty zone.
How long is that thirty mile limit around that corner?
Good four.
How many feet?
Until you see the next sign. I'm not exactly how far until the next sign.
Okay.
So, basically- There's some orange or yellow signs, or it's a suggestion?
It's a suggestion.
The orange or yellow ones are suggesting-
Well, then they're suggesting, the state is suggesting them, from Tanner's corner, if you want to call it that, McCormick, there's no other sign that says forty until almost the Camp Road. And so, everybody, everybody, because I looked at it the other day, and I said, "Ooh, thirty miles an hour, thirty-five miles an hour." Everybody's going over the speed limit. Because I drove past that to see when the next sign is. And the next sign is forty by the Camp Road.
Great.
So, who gets signs? How does the town get signs since the D-
DOT.
DOT. They have to ask for it?
Yeah. Kevin has gotten a sign before, but I think this would have to come from the board.
They have to. Each, each road is dedicated a speed limit. When they did 127-
Can you get in the mic, please?
Well, I, I've always been told I was too loud. When they did 127 back in the eighties, they built that road fifty, fifty-five miles an hour. And then they backed it back to forty. That road's built for fifty miles an hour, and it's hard enough to go fifty. And then thirty-five mile an hour signs, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but when they're yellow and you're still going forty, that's just a suggestion. That's what-
That's right.
You can't get a ticket. But they're just there for a warning. You should slow down a little bit. But you have to go to the state and make a request, and then they do a study. It's quite a process. And then, if you're going to do all this, you need to hire that van, two more people, and another cruiser, because a sign anywhere, Fashion Hollow Road or anywhere in town, is only as good as keeping an eye on it. You can track every road with all the signs in the world, but if you can't enforce that, you've wasted your money and stuff. But I'd like to see that back to fifty, fifty-five miles an hour for man-coming delivery.
So, my question would be, obviously, a speed question, and the state, state studies, et cetera, which we have to pay for for them to do that, in most cases. The other comment, though, which makes a lot of sense to me, is things like the caution to any vehicles and making sure that there's the good yellow warning signs for, "There's a road off to the side here." So, at least no one is, obviously locals know, but at least no one that's kind of just traveling the road is going to be surprised by the road. Is there a different, can you just request that from DOT, or is there a process?
I think as a process, you have to submit it formally to DOT, because they have to approve signs.
Other comment from the board?
Well, I guess all I would do is, I think it would be nice to have the, just to remind people how fast they're going, that effect.
The trailer with the "ow," right?
Yeah. First morning, you were there, and my husband's like, "Well, why didn't you tell me you talked about that?" I said, "I didn't see it." No, you know, you are, you're going to work, he's, you know.
Well, he's seen me, because I've seen the trucks go down.
I know. Freaked him out. But anyway, so, your presence, I think, is fantastic. I think one of those signs to allow. But I'm a little bit with them on the fact that, you know, yes, safety is important, but there's lots of parts of this road that, that, you know, and I understand where Lou's coming from, but, you know, it's just, I had a son that lost his license, and we did thirty-five a lot of places, and that takes a long time to get places. And I never realized it until you had to do it. I used to say, "Let me drive." No, we never did. No, but it's important for people to remind them that, yeah, you come into that hill and you're not paying attention, coasting.
Tyler Road's forty miles an hour, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, another thing that would seem reasonable to me, based on the comments of people going really fast around the corner and then continuing to gun it. Well, I find it hard that someone would be able to make that corner at sixty miles an hour. It would be reasonable to me to suggest that maybe if you were a little bit down Roby Road, so that you would catch them doing that acceleration up, off of the main road, that would be a reasonable place to sit for a little while as well.
I was sat on Roby Road. Had the other officers sit on Roby since Mr. Andy gave us the complaint. Who sat up the road, so you can't quite see it until you pass his driveway. You'll see us at the top of the hill if you're looking. But it looks like there's a car coming at you. We haven't got anybody yet. I know who he's, who he's talking about, and that's the vehicles we've been looking for.
Could I make a little comment?
Please.
With this idea of notifying individuals that, you know, kind of go a little slower, I think, like in this month's issue of the Gray Line, there's a police department monthly report and kind of suggesting things. It would be nice to see, like they have reminders for owners of dogs to come in and get your license for the dog. It might be nice to see reminder, watch the speed limit, careful on turns, et cetera.
That's all. Fine. I'm doing it.
We'll add that into next month.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right. Do we have any further comments on this topic? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our next appointment. That will be Pearson and Guggel on transparency. Please come on up.
Your arm's gotten shorter.
My whole body's gotten shorter.
As a reminder, we will let them make their presentation, and then we will have further comments afterwards.
Got a little paperwork I'd like to give the, your selectmen first. Just in case you don't have any in front of you, if you don't know what it is, I have a copy of each, for each one of you. The oath of office, what it means, and what it takes to relieve a person of oath of office. And I have the town policy of fraud policy. This is the town policy. I don't know if you've ever read it, but you need to read it, because I honestly believe that many several people have broke that fraud policy. And you do need to read it.
I'll let you guys have that one. I'll line up on the last slide.
I am one of the people that have filed a complaint against a town treasurer. I have been to Franklin District Court to find the charges filed against him. He has been arrested. I hope you guys follow with me. I'm not very good at kind of putting my stuff together, but I'll get there. Transparency for Webster Town officials. I would like to discuss the land transactions between the town officials and Bruce Johnson. The arrest took place on June 16th. I was told from the clerk, Mr. Johnson was charged with two charges. Public officials bad from certain private dealings. Case number 4372021CR733. Court date for arraignment, July 26th. Maybe the chief can clarify what exact charges are. Was there admission of guilt to any of the charges? Maybe he can answer this. I really don't know if Mr. Johnson had admitted to any of these guilt charges at all. Do you know if he had admitted to anything, chief?
The problem we have, John, is he can admit to anything he wants, anybody can, but until he goes into court and makes the plea, either guilty, not guilty, or no law, that's the only time that the admission is actually taken into consideration.
All right.
Since we didn't have the mic, the point was that only the court plea on the court date is considered being binding, and that has not happened yet.
Let me see where I go from here. I have a copy of the State of the Oath of Office rules. It seems he and others have broke the oath a few times. And as it reads, CPAC 2, Article 84 of the Constitution of the State of New Hampshire. And as any such person who violates said oath of office, take the same, shall be forthwith dismissed from office or position involved. That is what the oath reads. In my opinion, he broke the oath of office, and he broke the fraud policy. And that, in my opinion, he should be removed from office. This is my opinion. The policies of importance are the settling of the town-owned properties policy. He wrote them. He actually wrote these policies knowingly, these policies, and he's still wrote them.
He also wrote, and was the chair signing the fraud policy?
Yes. He actually wrote that fraud policy. The town fraud policy, the board needs to review these policies, because Mr. Johnson and the town officials involved in the transactions brazenly broke so many sections in this policy and hid it in non-public sessions from the town. Going forward, the board of selectmen need to be further familiar with and obey all town policies. Make sure to follow them and be transparent at all times with them. Has Mr. Johnson been using any town funds, including the town attorney, involving this investigation and cases?
Any funds for the legal attorney, et cetera?
Yes.
Would have to come through the select board and/or Dana. And Dana, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the town has had nothing to do with defending Bruce?
Correct. That's correct.
It would be fair to say that the town has asked the town's attorney advice on how the town should handle itself, but not in any way, shape, or form related to defending or helping Bruce in his case?
I think that is the best way to deal with it. Is the board of selectmen going to the court? And do you have a recourse to return these laws back to the town of Webster in a financial penalty of losing the amount paid for the land and the taxes paid plus some? Do you intend to get the land back and, with him losing the money paid into this? Because the money he paid for this does not match the tax stand. So, either somebody either lied to DRA, I mean, so registry deeds on how much they paid for this property, or we were not told the correct amount on what he did pay. The money was not, the town never reported this income to DRA.
So, we wouldn't have income reported to the DRA from the transaction. How exactly that would be reported, I'm not sure. Unfortunately, I was not on the board at the time.
It has, it has to be reported.
But it would have been reported in, as part of the budget at the time. The, but wouldn't necessarily show up as, say, the Bruce Johnson land sale. It might show up in a line of, "These are revenues from sales." And it might just be lumped in that way as far as a DRA submission form. Regarding your other question of getting back the property, I'll quote you actually from the fraud policy that you mentioned, the very last line. "In all cases involving monetary losses to the town, the town will pursue recovery of losses." There may be options available to the town to do so, but none of them would be possible until a legal conviction.
Okay. Would it be a conviction, or after he goes to, it would be after he goes to the hearing and then he, however he pleads? Then if there's a court case, and then it would be?
Well, what he pleads is not the important part, but what the court determines. If the court determines he's guilty, then at that point, possibilities open up for legal recourse.
But Chief Adams, that hearing is just him pleading, right?
Guilty and not guilty.
He can end it, he can end it right then and there, by pleading guilty or no law, but the conviction rate will, won't happen until that plea's entered.
And then if somebody pleads no law, they still will give some kind of conviction?
The court will have a finding of guilty on a no law plea.
So, does that, that does not take out the, you know, fraud policy, right?
No. So, basically, a no law plea means, "I'm not saying that I'm guilty,"
Right.
"But I will accept the findings of the court," and the court always does a finding of guilty on that.
There's another mic down there.
In my opinion, you selectmen can still file charges on Mr. Johnson-
There's the clip.
-on the fraud policy yourself and breaking the oath of office. You can file that on these by yourself, and I believe you should, as a separate charge. And I believe you, as selectman, should file this charge against him. A fraud policy and breaking the oath of office. And I believe this court of selectmen needs to file these two charges against him. There's a whole separate charge. And I have a full case of every policy. This, this goes back almost to, I don't remember the exact year, 2016, 2017, of every policy that he has broken, from voting in a board of selectmen's office, regular meeting, where he voted not to sell this piece of land. It was given to conservation. Nancy Schofield, Mike Borack, and Bruce Johnson voted in a selectman meeting not to sell it. He knew what he was doing. Soon as he gets up as a selectman, he comes right in the back door, close session meeting, buys that under the table. He knew what he was doing. He broke so many policies. That's where he broke the fraud policy. And I'm more than willing to give you every selectman meeting, all the way back until, like, 2016. I've got a break in order. And I'm willing to be work with the town transparency. So, you guys, you guys don't know any of this. And a lot of these policies are gone, because the records have disappeared. Why did they disappear? Why was a lot of this stuff shredded? This is why I brought it up at town meeting this spring. Why did the records get shredded? It's all tied together, folks.
Wendy, is it possible to see where the money went when he gave, when he paid the seven thousand?
I have to know when that was purchased, which even though it was in non-public, and the money was flowed through sale of town property. So, I can try and trace back to where the money hit the town.
Is this where it is? Is it the same money that the treasurer handles his own money?
He really-
So, that actually goes through the finance department, and they have all the bookkeeping for it. Treasurer is the one that's making sure that the number that he gets from them matches what's in the bank and signing the check.
When we did a ninety-one day to find out where that seven thousand dollars went, they couldn't find it. Eventually, they said, "Well, they had to go into general fund somewhere." Well, where? How? Just the general fund.
So, there should be a line, and I remember that that came in for that right to know.
Yeah. I thought I had found the seven thousand, and I probably have it in my files, so I'll look it up and get it to you, John. It went into sale of town property and went into the general fund. And I don't remember the date, but-
All sale of town property goes into-
Fall of nineteen, anyway, yeah.
Generic revenue.
But my big thing, I guess, is I really want to work with transparency. And I think it's time that the voters in this town is aware of all the good things that happen in this town, but we need to know the bad as well as the good. And we need to be able to vote for you folks that are at this table, and be able not to vote for some people. But be able not to vote for somebody, we got to know what they've done. And to reelect somebody, we got to know what they have done to be able to reelect them. And if we can't be transparent out there, will the good end the bad? And that's what I really want to do, is just to be transparent out there. And I'm not going to be vicious and vindictive at all. And I just think it's time that we really open up this can of worms and get to the bottom of it, and hopefully we can start all over. And get this town back together where it should be.
So, on that note, I would like to say, first off, thank you for bringing up the transparency issues. Second, this board, especially myself to start with before these members stepped in, but also this board as well, has been fully supportive of us doing everything we possibly can to not only be transparent, but to make it easier to find and access all of that information. One of those is, of course, streaming and the new streaming policy that we've enacted. There are all boards, commissions, et cetera, that must serve public notice of a meeting. Will be streamed or recorded and then further uploaded to our YouTube account. We have requested getting back together and put in place the Records Retention Committee, which hopefully we will have a meeting for soon. And they will be the ones that should and will determine how long various types of records must be kept for and may be kept for, and continue that in transparency, so that nothing disappears that's not supposed to. So, we are absolutely working towards doing that. We've already enacted and signed policies to do that. And so, we are fully with you on wanting to be as transparent as possible. It's not possible for us to go back and make something in the history transparent for what they did or didn't do, other than, yes, there was a sealed meeting. No, it was not public. We unsealed it. I made it so that the notes for that could be read, which you've seen, that's where the, I believe, the seven thousand number came from, because that's where it was mentioned in those non-public previously sealed minutes. We've actually got a date coming up set up so that we can look at sealed minutes for the past three to five or seven years, and unseal any that do not require staying sealed for whether it might be a personal interaction for an employee or an employee-type situation where we need to remain sealed for HR purposes. But anything that doesn't fall under those sorts of reasons, we expect we'll be unsealing. So, we are absolutely moving forward to try and be as transparent as possible.
You know, I want to make one more comment, and I'll be done. I mean, ninety-nine percent of you folks on this board, and a lot of us out here, we're not attorneys. We're going to make mistakes. We're going to make mistakes. And I ain't going to hold anybody accountable for the mistakes, as long as they're honest ones. And, you know, we come forward and we admit it, hey, I've made a lot of mistakes in my life. I voted for some selectmen I personally did not like, but I voted for, so I thought they'd be honest and do what was right for the town. I voted for some others I didn't like, I wished I didn't. And, you know, and that's the way it is. I made mistakes by voting for people I liked. The ones I didn't like, which didn't have been a job.
Thank you, I think.
So, I mean, it goes both ways. It goes both ways.
Absolutely.
So I'm not holding anybody accountable for making mistakes, as long as they're honest ones.
Yeah, and, and we're trying to capture all of that to make sure that it will always...
So I'm not looking to pin you against the wall. We all make mistakes. Not my share. Thank you, folks.
Thank you for coming and presenting.
Yeah, I'll be part two.
Okay.
Won't be dragged out as long as he was. But the first thing I want to say is, Dana, if you, I, this is my, the book of the complaint. We've got everything. I've got the $7,000 information right here, the check number, and a couple things, and I do have questions about them, but I will be glad to come in tomorrow, and you can make copies or write down everything that I've got. I mean, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's a big book, but it's got everything from A to Z in it, in order, in year order, and everything else, so I do want to say, this board is a really good board. We've got new blood on, and we've got Dee who has experience, and she knows the town inside now. So we've got a really good board, and the problem is you're going to have to be doing a lot of cleanup from, you know, things got a little out of hand. For years, we've been talking about transparency in town, but it runs both ways. It runs from the officials in the town and it runs with the people, so we have to work, we have to work together. We elect or appoint our town officials because we believe that we can trust them to run the town's business on a daily basis. We trust them also to write policies that are beneficial to the town, and to, and that the selectmen can become familiar with the policies as soon as they, they are elected. No disrespect at all, but when we had brought this situation up in October and November, Mrs. Shadler had no clue that we had a selling of town properties or, or a fraud policy. We started with the selling of town properties, which is the first one that we found that was definitely broken. So it's very important for, to be educated, especially about town policies, and I know most people are, so anyway.
Just, just before you go, I just want to, I just, before you continue, I want to add in that we're actually going to be talking about that later on in this meeting as well under a policy review session for new business.
Okay. I know the policies are good, they're not that old, but as time goes by, things change and you have to, but at least know that those policies exist, you know, that we have, not just a personnel policy or something, or, you know, sexual harassment policy, but there are other policies that run in town. And, and that was one of the problems, and John mentioned it, that two to three of the participants in that transaction with the selling of those properties, they, they claimed to have not known about the policies, and even though it was co-written by one or two of them. Transparency means town business is conducted in public and not private. Like John said, if you're going to sell property, and you're going to probably sell some tonight, you got to do it in the public. It's a public thing, nothing should be done in private. When you're selling a piece of town property, there's a way to do it, you don't just have, the minutes say that somebody came in, offered some money, they said, okay, let's do it, went into private session and sold it. I asked at the meeting beforehand, did anybody contact the butters? And I just got shoulders raised. So, I don't know, and I, I put in 91As with Dana, and the 91As which I've got in here and his responses, I cannot find anything in any files anywhere. There's nothing anywhere. So, anyway, basically, I want to say, we all need to work together, everybody. Great new board, we've got great people in town, new people in town getting involved, Dave, you're a prime example. So if we all work together to ensure that the, a good future for the town of Webster, with our government and townspeople working hand in hand to benefit our town, it's going to be a good thing. Let's make it the last time that something like this happens. We can obey the local and state laws, do our homework, and be educated. Thank you for putting the time in that you all put in. Thank you for your, Dee, you've done it many times now, but thank you all. We've got a really good crew in our office. And this was not a malicious thing, this is called cleanup. I did not do this alone, I had help, but we did our homework, and I won't give you anything that I don't have on paper. So I just want to make that clear, and that's, that's what happened in this situation. So I thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. I know I've sat a bit doing this, so I want to make sure that the other board members get to speak here as well.
What did you say? We don't want, you know, I didn't, I didn't do this to hide me, too. Really? You know? Me either.
All right, thank you. With that, typically, I do also open up for public comment, so if we have any public that would like to comment on this topic before we move on to the next one, please do so.
Just...
Yeah, just grab a mic.
So, I have a question. Whereas in, in that testimony that John just gave, he just asked you, as a board, if you'd be considering two more charges in regards to local office and fraud policy? And I guess my question is, yes, in fact, to you, but also to our chief, what, what would that be?
That's not a criminal charge, the police department can pursue.
I mean, this is all pretty shocking to me, when I'm just like writing down as fast as I can.
That's a good question.
So I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, I don't know that we know the answer.
No, it's an attorney, it's an attorney question.
It is, it is an attorney question, in some ways. All John has asked you is to act on...
Policies.
Not only the policies, but also on town people's behalf, and get, put additionally two more charges. So I guess, not necessarily asking you to help me understand from a law enforcement point of view, what would that be, if they're, like, if they're not criminal? Can you explain those to me? What would that entail for the consequences?
So that's not a criminal charge per se through the police department. And I've made the suggestion, actually, I talked to John today about it, the only place that that case can be brought forward would be the Office of Public Integrity out of the Attorney General's office. They have a specific office just for that, and if it's going to be pursued, that's the people who have to, to take it from there.
And something comes from us, saying the previous board member broke these policies?
Then they, it's an Office of Public Integrity, they take care of it.
So it will be initiated by our selectmen?
They would have to request the Attorney General's office to look into it, and then this, I think we have all the documentation for everything.
But wouldn't it be like, wouldn't they have to go to court first if he's found guilty, and then we could, because aren't people innocent until they're proven guilty? I guess.
You can still bring this forward with all the documentation, bring it forward, and they do their own investigation. Even if he were to plead guilty, the only thing they would, they wouldn't take that guilty consideration into it, they would look into the other accounts, and they have plenty of documentation for everything.
So more or less, because he had, or these policies are written, and...
Knowingly changed.
And, and it looks to us, or I don't, I'm not going to speak for you, but looks that had said he wrote these policies, then, then what we do is we say, if that's what we agreed to do, it goes in, and then they do the investigation. And that can happen before his hearing.
And it can happen anytime, anytime at all.
And that doesn't cost the town any money?
Nope.
I see Tara already speaking, you can give her a mic again. So, the policy...
I, I think I can clarify a little bit, when the chief and John were talking about. The, the charges right now are public officials barred from certain private dealings, and that's a state...
Statute.
Statute. It's section 95, colon, 1. And so that's, those are the charges right now. But the others that were broken were town policies, the sale of town property, and the fraud policy. So those are the ones that you as a select board, correct me if I'm wrong, would be taking care of, of those two policies.
Correct.
And...
Breaking the oath of office.
Yeah, because it, and the oath of office, but the, the selling of properties, "Properties shall be offered by the town as is where is, with all fault, with no representation, as to the quality of the title being conveyed." Just to let you folks know, the, the deed, this says, "We do not ever give warranty deeds." The deed was warranty deed three or four times in the deed. It's a, it's a total warranty deed. That's illegal. It was signed illegally by Leslie Palmer twice. She signed as a witness, and signed as the notary public. Can't do that. And she could lose her notary license for that. But the whole thing was just a circus. It was just, and that's because it was done quickly, behind closed doors. If it hadn't been done legally, no problem, no problem whatsoever. But, so that clarifies, the Franklin District Court takes care of one, and then it comes back to the selectmen with the, with the town policies.
Policies. We have all the policies in our record.
So just to clarify, thank you very much, John. Thank you, Chief. Are you, as a board, are you going to consider an investigation in the AG's office additionally?
So I don't want to speak for the whole board at this point, but that is something that the board should discuss.
All right. Thank you. I just need to talk about that.
Thank you. Um, I think John, which we have, before I move on to the next one, we have as a board our work session at 3 o'clock next Monday, that we were going through all of the sealed minutes. And we want to add discussion about this, and we want to request Dana to ask of our attorney or town council, I should say, at that time?
Wait, what were you saying? We should go, about what?
Do you want to add this discussion to our agenda for next Monday during that work session?
Oh, oh, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. We can figure out what we should have Dana ask our town council.
So you'll put that on, I'm sorry. You'll put that on as an agenda item for your Monday meeting next Monday?
Yeah.
In addition to the review of the non, all right, thanks.
And just a pointed clarification for anybody, because we will be going through sealed non-public minutes. It is expected that, of course, it is a public meeting, but it is expected that we'll probably be in non-public most of the time to discuss previously sealed non-public minutes, so don't be too surprised if you show up and you can't actually hear too much until we unseal those minutes. Moving along in our appointments, so thank you very much to the presenters. Hopefully, we've been able to address and move forward. Moving on in our appointments is the salt shed subcommittee. Do we have a representative from them here?
I'm one of the members, but really, I've got nothing to say.
All right. They've requested to be on the appointment list. Dana, what did they give you for a reasoning for that, so we can try to consider something?
We received a letter from the chairman of that committee asking what, if anything, the select board would like to have them address. Is the committee going to continue, and what would they be doing now that the site for the salt shed has been located? It was formed with the purpose of finding a location for the salt shed, that's done. And so there was a letter that came in requesting what the board's pleasure was going forward.
All right, thank you. And what does the board think of this one?
I thought we'd assess the committee would stay together and, and figure out, to me, I guess, the salt shed, or just whatever it's going to look like, and do we have to do that, Mr. Rule Agent? Do you have something in mind? Do you know what you're going to do anyway, or is, I know you're doing it driveway?
I, I have in mind what we, what would be nice, but it's what we can afford, and you just go around and find what you want, that somebody else has already built and designed, and work off of that. Figure out how many yards of sand you want to keep undercover, and how many yards of salt, and...
And it's pretty much a lean-to type of building, in a sense, right?
Well, no, it has to be done right. I mean, that part's going to have to be engineered up there, where the salt shed's going to be, so you don't get the salt leaching down into the, where the sand's going to go with no salt, and it's a different story, but where the salt's going to go, in the right material, because salt doesn't like cement, and it cracks it and stuff. I mean, there is some thought to put into it, but that's going to be, that's going to be a couple of years. I mean, I can't see being down there, having sand undercover next summer, maybe. I mean, we got to get the money, there's a lot to it. Right now, we have a problem that you folks don't know about, when we were down there the other day. The boundary on the left-hand side, there's no room to put a ditch in.
When you say left-hand side, do you mean when facing the building from the road?
Yeah.
You mean, same road from the...
Where the road is, on the left-hand side, you look at them ribbons that I marked off, there's a boundary at the top, there's a boundary at the bottom. They kept telling me there was another boundary down here, and it went on an angle, and I kept telling them, no, that's where it is. Well, that's where it is, because the paper that I got from Russell the other day, and you measure everything out, it goes on an angle up top, the land that we bought. To do that road right, we need another 20 feet to the left that we need to purchase from them folks, or we need to do some made fillings in that ravine that's going up there, because...
Can you fill a ravine? No?
Oh, yeah.
Well, you can, you can fill it, but is it legal?
Dee, with money, you can do anything.
Well, yeah, that's true.
So...
So do you think this committee should still be stay together?
No.
No?
I think the committee has done a good job. They found us the piece of land I wanted, the best for the town. That was the piece of land that, I had stand shed committee long before this committee, and that was the piece that we were working on getting. So, we wanted after George Cummins, before George was there, with Jamie Fortune.
It, it was after.
Jamie Fortune was on the committee, and there was a couple other, and, so, the committee did a great job, we got the piece of land, and that's my opinion, get the road up there. There's a lot to do to get that piece of land prepped before there's a building there, and then we got to have the money to put the building up.
That'd be helpful.
So...
So I just want to remind people that if you're going to speak... So I just want to remind people that if you're going to speak, thankfully, we can all hear in it pretty well, but if you want to speak, we do have a microphone. So you can come up and provide that if you need. We did have another.
I just wondered, where is this land you're talking about?
Directly behind the safety building. Up on the hill behind the safety building. Now, the question was, where is this land?
So. I mapped that out from Battle Street to the stone wall. It's three hundred and ninety feet up over the hill, as good as I could with my phone and the apps and everything, but being off two or three feet, which you could be. So I don't know what you want to do. I don't know if you want to hire a surveyor, see how close I am. I mean, four feet would be a lot better. Fifteen to twenty would be a lot better. I mean, we got almost four inches of rain, what'd you say we got the other night?
Three and a half inches of rain.
Wow.
And that road is different.
With no ditch or any, the road didn't move.
Yep, no washout, no nothing.
The way it is, but I just don't want to do something on someone else's property to cause a stink, and then this gentleman might say, do what you want. But if he sells the land in a year or ten years, we need to do it right. I'm glad I noticed that before we got a lot more money into it.
So we never had a survey when we bought that land?
Not, not five acres that we already own. And all we had, well, all the committee had was just that one line going across. I don't believe the back, the back was ever surveyed. They just paid that surveyor to chop fourteen, am I correct? Is it fourteen or seventeen? Whatever acres out for the gentleman that owns the land, and they just, we just paid them to put a line through there. The rest of it's not surveyed.
Yeah, when that came up, Chris presented it to the select board at the time, which was Chris, myself, and Bianca in a, in the work session meetings. And the choice was to either pay for the line and the new bound markers to be properly surveyed, and the rest to be calculated based on existing borders, since we weren't concerned about the other borders of the new property, or to fully survey the new property purchase. All of that would be behind the safety building, so even if we had fully surveyed that new land, that probably would not have accounted for this, which sounds like it was during the purchase of the land for the safety building in the first place. So. That would be something to consider going forward, and how we want to look at it. But that's getting ahead to different topics. So we're talking about the commission for the salt shed subcommittee, and.
I'm sorry.
And whether they should still be, A, in effect, and B, if so, what their charge is. And it sounds like we have already used their expertise to find and locate the property that the salt shed was to be on. And while they have lots of expertise, I don't know that they're going to have expertise in salt sheds themselves from road aspects. What does the rest of the board think?
I'm kind of with you on that. I don't, at this point, you know, when it's something that couldn't be pulled back together, or something would come to the next level, or, you know, somebody to do the research of what the building, what the best building and the type of building it, and begin with pointing out the, you know, what needs to be engineered, what doesn't. So I don't, I personally don't see a need, but I could be missing something.
Do you?
I don't really know, to tell you the truth. Yeah, I mean, really, they've done their work, I guess, so.
Yeah, and they did a good job.
Yeah, so we can always use volunteers in other places if they want to do something else. I'm sure we can find something.
There is no lack of ability to use volunteers.
Yeah, true.
All right.
So we should be thanking, sending a letter, we're not going to have them. Should we send a letter to each one of them thanking them for their time?
I would be thanking them.
I would too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it sounds like the collective is saying that we should thank and disband the salt shed committee.
Okay, yeah.
All right, I would accept a motion for that.
I can, I'll motion that. We disband the salt shed committee and send letters of thanks to our volunteers.
All right, I would second that. I will call myself. Aye.
Aye.
All right. So thank you to the salt shed committee, and that moves us on to the next. So that's going to be our department head reports. May the chiefs come on down.
The price isn't right either.
The price.
So we even have to turn on mic.
Yeah, we're going to chase it.
Who do you want first, my friend?
Rochelle Goode. Uh, go ahead. You were already starting to talk to us about some of what I would do, you'll bring up, so.
Sure. So on the sand shed road, we'll have to figure out what direction we want to go in, but we don't have to do that right at the moment.
What, what happens about now that you've come against, I mean, what you're saying is, you got it, I just saw, you got it up in there?
Well.
And, but you don't have the drains you like to see?
Correct. What we did, what we did the other day is we just went up and cleaned the short shrubby brush off the bank that was there, and brought, brought the crap out of that whole brush off. And then when we got looking around in the boundaries, and, yeah, it's closed. It's right in the middle of that bank, the way I have it mapped out. It will still work. But the ditch that everybody was talking about we wanted and all that, for all runoff they claimed that we were going to get, isn't going to be there. But we can put a catch basin, an in-drop catch basin up a little bit further and bring the water across, and there's things you can do. But we just have to go a different route. I'm going to have that ditch up through there like I explained, and change the plan.
So at this point, you're not, you're not feeling that we should get it surveyed, so you make sure that the line that you think is there?
Well, it would be neat. It would be neat to, you know, if I'm off four feet, you know what you have to work with. Or maybe the gentleman there, you know, if he would sell you fifteen feet by four hundred feet to make it right, because if you're going to build the driveway up there, you might as well do it right the first time for future, for something down the road, fifteen, twenty years, instead of just having a cat path up there. I mean, I can get up and down the hill one eight feet wide, but twenty years down the road.
So do you need like a motion from us to, to at least investigate, what, see if we can get a price from a surveyor? And, or should we just make a motion to?
The thing, the first thing to do is just see if that, the neighbor would sell us another fifteen, twenty feet wide, forty feet long up there, and then they'd have to set the bounds again. And I mean, it's a process, and it's money, but, and then if not, if he says, no, I don't want anything to do with you folks, then we'll set it all the way away and closer to the safety building. Just have to put a rock wall in there and make it happen.
So how do we report on that? Jamie Jones?
I guess what I need to do is put permission from you folks. I'll go talk to him and feel him out.
Right, because if you can't, yeah.
Dana.
Yeah, that's the best going time. See, we see what they feel. I mean, if he thinks it's worth a million, we're not going to go there.
Right.
Right, so until we know that, I was just trying to kind of, in a sense, move it along so you know your next directions. And so that's what I would say. You go see the guy and see what he thinks.
Does that make sense with you, Chief?
It does. I wonder if there's a possibility for a ten-foot right-of-way, which would carry over to whoever purchased it?
Oh, you mean, you mean indeed it right-of-way?
Technically possible, but I mean, at that point, you're basically purchasing it right-of-way.
The land.
But what do you suggest at this point for us?
You know, I, I think it would be better if the town wrote a letter explaining the situation, asking if they'd be interested, so you have something in writing.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I have nothing to do with it, but.
No, no, you're right.
I thought it would be probably better to.
Yeah.
Write a letter.
I, I, well, and then I just think also Chatten would do about it, or Shiki, whatever. At least you'd be forewarned, because some, you know, what am I trying to say? Meaning like, oh, I see what they're trying to do, not like we're, we're trying to put in a, they mean your highway, or these thinking, I don't want that next to my property, just kind of.
Well, I agree with that after the letter goes out.
Okay.
And I think, I think we could send a letter we'd like to maybe. I almost think the owner is Mrs. McAllen, and I don't think she's in Webster. So, but we can incorporate that.
Okay.
At the time, we had several, when the original purchase was done, we had several back and floors with her and the caretaker, or her person being in charge of her and the land, which I believe is one of her sons.
I've dealt with Mr. Jim McAllen, and I believe he's, he's also a person to talk to. Very nice people. Right, and then if it's, and then if it's stupid money or something, then we'll just go the other way? There's a world is a way.
All right.
All right, so that puts the boots to that. So we want highway or fire first? We'll go with fire, because I got all the. We're at a hundred and eight calls today. The weekend was quiet because of the rain. Good, so that's good. The chicken barbecue is the twenty-fourth of this month. So that's, they've been doing like hot ta, hot cakes. Thank you, Dee, for putting that in your paper.
I've written all the papers, by the way.
At the safety building the other day, last, yeah, last Friday, when I was there, I had water in on the floor in the truck bay. Up where the heater goes up through the ceiling, the two heaters, the exhaust, the plastic or rubber boot up there must be tired and leaking. So I went over and got Phil, and I showed it to him, so, because he takes care of stuff there.
Yeah. I bet you that's a leaking roof.
Right there, yeah.
So it wasn't major, it wasn't horrible, but it started. So that needs to be addressed before too long. The pumps. The pumps will be tested next month in, all serviced by Perkins Pump. And then next month is the inspection and maintenance of the vehicles over to Charlie Voice or to Davisville. We're at fifty-one point twenty-eight percent of our budget left, so that gives us fifty-two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-two cents to, today. Thank you, Wendy, for getting these out. I told you, yeah, last month, we have lost our own officers all together. Anybody have any questions on the firehouse? We have two young ladies that just finished up their EMT class, and they're on state. Task done. One of them has it this month. I'm not sure about the other one. We have two young men that are almost, they're three-quarters of the way through their firefighting one class that they've taken in Sunapeet. That's two nights a week, and at the academy, most of the day, either on Saturday or Sunday. So that's like a full month class, so we're pretty proud of them, young men. We have a new, Sean Tumi is our new fire marshal, City Conqueror. He took over for Paul. Let me see if I can. Yeah. Nice guy, good guy to work with, personal friend, so. It's all working good on that side. Cavalier meeting, been tending them once a month. Forest Fire Warden meeting starts back up. They haven't had one of them for over a year. That's this next week coming, so I think we're opening it back up.
So one of the kind of longstanding things that you've been working on, I know it's been the new fire equipment?
Yes.
How is that coming along? I believe last time we were still waiting for an updated quote.
It is an updated quote, because I've changed the cab and chassis. Because now with the newer stuff, things change, and the other truck had a two-piece frame, and I really didn't like that in a fire truck or any truck. So now the International has a one-piece frame. So what happens with a two-piece frame is the salt and the crud and stuff, if you're a truck owner, it just ruins them. So I'm working on a single frame, cab and chassis. They built a couple of these Internationals, grew up in Maine, and I'm doing some research on that and working with E1, the vendor that's building them trucks. So just, so I might have thrown a monkey wrench into the loop, but I just, for spending almost a half a million dollars, I want something that's going to last more than twenty years. You know, reach out another, up to twenty-five, maybe thirty years. So.
Do you have any rough expectation of when we might see that kind of quote from them?
I talked to him last Friday, actually, and he's waiting to, it's all, it's all put together with an engineer, several engineers, with the pump company, truck company, tank, and it's, it's quite a process. It is work in progress. Chris Champagne is the man's name that I'm dealing with, E1.
Any other questions about fire? No?
On the highway, we changed the culvert on the White Plains Road, where it comes off the state the other day. That's been nothing but a headache for a long time. And we changed that, and that's all new. So maybe next Christmas Day, when it's raining, we won't be over there getting that unplugged. And then I waited almost six weeks for the one-foot culvert that I needed up on top of Win Pocket Road. So now Win Pocket Road and the Call Road, all of them in the last few years, then they were all plastic pipes, because the pipes that were changing, our twenty-year pipe, the bottom of them, brought out and the road sat in. So I'm going to change one tomorrow on Pleasant Street that's fallen, and get that done. Conquer Drive was going real well. We ripped off the tire, and the engineer called a couple of times just to make sure that things are going well. And then Jeff, the young man that's in charge of the waterworks, is a great guy to work with. in charge of the waterworks, a great guy to work with. So they have the temporary water all in place, and all, and the bungs from the house back to the street are all ready to be hooked in. Last Friday, they took a water sample to Conquer to get tested, and once the water test comes back through the temporary piping, then they can hook up the houses, and then once the houses are hooked up, we can go back down there and get the rocks and stuff out of the road, and then if we get into an old pipe, we haven't caused any trouble. So they were hoping that, that everything went through with the test this week. By Friday, at the end of this week, they'd have their part done, so we could start down there tomorrow, we could get back to work on that project. Great folks to work with, but I don't know what's gonna happen now with the best they're in down there. Block grant, there's still 85.66% money left in that, that's $6,465.08, that's block grant. The general budget, there's 49.77% left of that, so that's $110,800.14 left in that. Wendy sent me one, Phil usually takes care of this, and I work with him close on the budget, maintenance for the safety building, looks like there's 44.51% left in that, $7,255.87 left in the safety building budget. We did Gray Bash and Hall, I got a call from Nancy Van Loon, I know they're trying to sell that house, so they want the road just as smooth as they can, so they can get a good toll for their house, so I went up there last Friday.
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday, Larry went up over to Gray there and smoothed that up to make her smile. And like the chief said, we got, what, three and a half inches of rain, and the ditches and Webster was something to be proud of.
All our roads held up higher, not one watered anywhere, not even a multi-star will rush out.
The only trouble that we had was the dead trees, got waterlogged, and then they'd fall out into the street, so I chased them two or three different times.
The one that Dave called me, he was already there, he was there to take care of it.
Phil called the other day, and the phone rang, and I said, yeah, I'm standing, I'm sitting in front of it, it's on Roby Road, how did you get there so quick? So, yeah, no, the ditches are great. Yeah, good ditches, keep good roads.
So you mentioned that hopefully next week, we'll be able to get back down to Conquer, if they're continuing their current plan. What do we expect to, where should people expect to see you working during this week?
Well, we did a private job today, because the town only has so much to do, they need to work on every day. Tomorrow, we're gonna be on Pleasant Street. This pipe fell in there, and then there's two or three rocks right in the area where the excavator is, it's coming up through the tire. I might done with Wednesday, or tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, I don't know, let's see if we're still alive on that.
Sounds good. Any other questions for roads?
Just a little comment, Close Pen Bridge, I think, looks like it's getting some more nice holes in the bridge. Little things.
Oh, yeah, no, there's, there's another afternoon of coal patching.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, I just thought.
Yeah, no, no, I, we've been going over that quite a bit when we were coming out of the safety building to, to get rid of the crap.
I knew you did fairly often, how often do you have to go down there and coal patch that?
Well, probably fill in a hole once a month, that's all. Not, not horrible.
But you can't see the rivers to the bridge anyway, so that's good. Then I'm gonna get really worried. You're doing a good job.
Yes, question?
Yes, please.
Uh, just wondering if, if the work that's being, the drilling that's being done on Pond Hill Road, is that with the town, or is that a private landowner?
Oh, I have no clue, I, nothing I'm doing. Yeah.
Is it actually in the road or on the road?
To the side of it, I thought they were just kind of gonna bring that hill down so you could see what's coming, either way, but I thought it was the town.
I know, I know way back, Paul King and I went out there and looked at the driveway from that, they might be working on that.
Right at the beginning?
Yeah, right across from the other driveway, the guy that sells the eggs and stuff, right there, I know there's a new home going up in there that we look, we approved that driveway, I think it was last fall, but I'm not sure what's going on up there, they might be up there.
That's what it is, we're putting in driveway, and people will put a house eventually, maybe a couple of years down the road.
All right. Thank you very much, Chiefs, and as a last portion of the department heads, Dana, would you like to talk about the town?
Jeez, you all right, man?
Sorry, I already got his name.
Mike is speaking.
No, it's weird, thanks.
Don't worry, I put it.
Yes, please.
I'm not that fast. Well, see, we already talked about tickets and everything tonight, so.
So as of the 29th, we have $146,726.27 remaining of our $296,430 budget.
Can you use the mic?
Just equate it to 49.5% left in our budget, which is right on the power, we're moving to that. Breakdowns on calls, I gave a lot of that from the, from June 1st to the 29th, there were 72 motor vehicle stops, fined $849.40, I went over the stops on Battle Street alone. We had six arrests with a total of 18 charges. The scary part is, almost every one of those charges was drug-related, so we had fentanyl, cocaine, methamphetamines, all narcotics, almost everyone, I think there was 11 charges out of the 18 were all drug-related charges, so we're seeing more of that than we have anything right now, it's, it's kind of scary to have, and a little town, and that's all people passing through, that's probably the good part, but it's an unbelievable thing to have that many drug charges brought forward. We had 82 calls for service for the month, probably should put in there, one of the arrests was for public officials borrowing from certain bribe dealings, I know that's kind of one we mentioned, but we had animal complaints, and it seems like it's every month, it's always the same complaint, animal complaints, we serve a number of fine-licensed dogs, civil matters, assisted by the department and other agencies, domestic violence services, motor vehicle complaints, we've got a few of those. Police information requests, sex offender registries, house checks, you get a lot of those, pistol permits and residential burglary, we had a few of those in the last month, but other than that, it was relatively safe, everything was safe, we had no, no accidents, which was really good. Short and sweet.
Just to go back to the previous topic that had you talking about these, with the speed sign, I, it sounded like you expected to then put that down by Robbie Road once again.
Right next to his sign, right next to Mr. Gandy's sign, it's probably the safest place, that you'll see it coming from both angles, because his sign sticks out, I mean, that's the first thing you see when you go down the hill, if I pocket a little closer to the road and back away from his sign going towards Webster, you'll see it both ways. When you crest the top of it, it'll come down from Park, from Parkington Way, you'll see the sign right off the bat, and the other one, you'll notice it as soon as you get down on the dip a little bit, by then, the sign will be flashing.
Does that, does the sign record amount of speeds as like numbers of how many times?
It records how many cars go by and the average speed.
Oh, well.
And the rest of the time, so we get a printout.
Average speed per car or average speed overall of them?
It'll, it'll give you any high speeds, but then it'll give you an average speed of all the cars that went through.
Okay.
But it's nice, because it'll give us account too, also, of what's going through. Right now, the control board in the system, apparently got water in it, and then that went out, so they got another one on order, we talked to them today, they said they should have it up and running by the end of the week.
And then recommendations on, you know, you put it out there, and you give it, I don't know how long, and then, so to see if it's actually working, because you'll kind of be able to see that, I would assume.
Well, especially when they'll see the sign there, and we'll give them a couple of days to see the sign, and there'll be a cruiser sitting there.
Yeah.
Because you will get the feeling to say, well, I wonder how fast I can get the sign to show, which happens well, and if there's a cruiser sitting there, they find out how fast it shows.
In my old hometown, someone decided that they were gonna try to get it to, to wrap the numbers that didn't exist and make it show zeros. It didn't, but, but they had a nice find to go with. All right, as I was starting to say, before I got myself mixed up, because we'd already had the chief talking, for department heads, Dana, and then possibly Wendy since she's here, if you would talk about the town and the monthly finance summary.
The, our budget is in good shape. There is one account that's overdrawn, it's the welfare line, which of course is one of my lines, but I don't know what I can do about that. I haven't had an abundance of cases, but I've had a persistent case that I did not want to help this month for various reasons, but I may end up having to, but at any rate, that is really the biggest problem that we have. Sometimes our budget, we can't really go by percentages, because we pay bills, certain things once a year, and it skews that up. I would like to just say, while Wendy's here, it's been a pleasure having Wendy helping out with the finances, and I think we've got things pretty much in order. Having said that, Wendy will be out for a few weeks, and you're stuck with me again, but anyway, she can fix it when she gets back. We had spoken about when we changed the select board meeting schedule, that sometimes there would be weeks that the accounts payable and the payroll would not coincide with the select board meeting, and so I was asked to report to you on, once a month, the activity in those, even though you may have signed them and you already know, but what I have, since, since the last ones that you've approved, we had June 14th payroll was $22,169.36, which you approved. The June 28th payroll, $17,371.73, which David's the only one, so I'll be giving you that design tonight. Accounts payable, June 7th, $2,065.73. June 14th, and, and it was kind of odd, because when we met in June, we kind of got ourselves off schedule, so we've had payrolls every, accounts payable every week the last couple of weeks. July 5th, oh, June 28th, $359,992.20, and that is mostly made up of $338,000, that was a check written to the trustees of the trust funds, we funded the capital reserve fund, highways and roads, for $200,000, plus $138,000 for the expendable trust funds, and we will do the rest when fall taxes come in, because we have to save money now to pay for the school. Finally, July 5th, $91,329.64. Wendy, did you do anything that I've not said that I should say?
We're still waiting for the audit.
We have, we are still waiting for the audit, we have spent a lot of time getting things pulled together for him, and much of it is that his schedule has been, he's been fitting us in when he can, and I'm expecting to hear from him, so I'll assume he's, we've given him everything he's asked for, and it has been a challenge, but I appreciate Wendy's help with her on that, and I'm hoping that maybe in the next three weeks, we'll have, it'll be done, and when the report comes out, we'll probably all be doing it September or October.
The only other thing about that is that, once the audit does come back, that will adjust the monthly score of the highway, because of the things in the fire, that shows what was spent, those will all be changed with the journal entry, because there were things that were actually last year's, so that's one of the things we're waiting for, is the journal entries to come from the auditors, so I can adjust all those, so that we'll be more on track with what you're now, this really, so I think that mostly affects Emmett's budgets more so than the police department.
That's what the incumbents is.
Right.
Those are what the incumbents is, that, going into this year. I guess that's as far as financial-wise and office-wise, that's what I have. Thank you again, I appreciate everyone working with me, very, very helpful, I appreciate it.
It's so hard to get along.
All right, any questions for them from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Are we overdrawn in the welfare budget now for the whole year? Is that what we're trying to say?
That's what I'm saying, yes. We're overdrawn, I think, $2,800.
So far?
Yeah.
And it's only June?
It's only June, so, you know, we're.
And our budget, I mean, our budget goes from January through December.
Right, and so obviously, it's the bottom line, we're interested, and we just get it in front of me. We do have an account that we can fund this from in the, is it expendable trust fund? Or is it the capital reserve, I think it's an expendable trust fund, but we haven't decided whether we're gonna do that or not. I had a couple of cases that were expensive. 28.63 is what we're overdrawn, so I am, percent remaining is minus 130.15%, so that is certainly something, but we only budgeted $2,200.
That's very cheap for welfare.
And so, is that realistic? I don't know, this year because of COVID.
Yeah, I will say that during that budgeting process, we did look at that, and I think we actually based it to that this year.
Did.
And, but we did also say that we had the fund that should be used going above that, so I would definitely suggest, I'm seeing nods from the board, but it would definitely be a suggestion to look at using the fund going forward, since that's the purpose of it.
I thought we'd wait till the, more toward the end of the year, and request the trustees to withdraw some money as we offset that.
Okay, so as a, as a simple kind of offset.
Yeah, and I'm not sure whether we can offset it, or we put it as a revenue.
It would be income from the patent, but, you know, we don't, we don't usually combine revenue and expenses together, because then it makes the water muddy.
The auditors mentioned to me, because last year with COVID, we offset a lot of expenses, and I shouldn't have gotten that.
So if he just put a sign up out front, hell wanted, nobody's gonna stop.
Yeah, right.
No, no one is, because everyone's looking. No, no one is, because everyone's looking. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, any other further questions? All right, so thank you. And we'll move on to our next, which is whole business, town properties.
Are you, are you folks all good?
Yes.
I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna get caught up on my view this week. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't forget the cup, Jake.
I got it. I wrote it down.
Whatever you wish for.
Yeah, it could all change around. See?
Okay.
You're always in the book. I got your right to do it all.
I'll let you go ahead.
Yeah.
We've done that in advance, so we'll, we'll just keep it that way.
All right.
I'm gonna trick.
Yeah.
On the front, on the top, top, top.
There you go.
Your help was so fine. Okay, um, so we had a bid, um, these are lots on Winter Carous. Um, the town combined three lots to make them one. Uh, we did send a bid spec out and ask for the, um, policy. We sent it to a butters, and I think there were three butters that we sent it to, and we received two bids. Um, and we did ask for a minimum bid of 4,000. And I spoke to you last time about that, and it was basically, um, we figured what taxes we had out collected on those properties. Um, so the first bid. Uh, this is a bid from Philip's Strip Matter, and Philip's here. Um, and the bid for what is now lot 10, um, map 10 lot 158, which is the three lots, the 2.35 acre lot now, $4,351.
It's no surprise then.
The second bid is from Walter Masehill Jr., um, and his bid is $4,250. And those are the two bids that we received for this lot.
All right, per our policy, uh, it sounds like we, uh, just look at the top bid as they are both butters. Um, please correct me if I'm wrong.
No.
All right.
Parents winner.
Uh, so I would move that we accept the top bid from Hope Strip Matter.
Second.
On, uh, myself, I.
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 All right. Congratulations on your new property. Um, I believe we do require the merger of that. And Dana and or Russ can help ensure that.
We'll talk, we'll talk with Phil about it, and I assume he'll bring me money, which would be nice.
Yeah.
And I'll prepare, it will take a few weeks to prepare, um, beans.
Dana, would you accept pennies?
I have to tell you a funny story. I had someone who was paying a fine and they were mad at me. And they brought in a wheelbarrow full of pennies. And I had a summer that I worked in a bank and I learned how to roll coin. And I was awfully glad I did because I was determined. I was, I went and got wrappers and I rolled it and rolled it. I made him wait. And then I got to the end of it and I was off seven cents and I made him wait. And he told me years later, he says, I'll never do that again. But I win you, Phil.
All right, so that takes care of the first town property. And do we have others that we are, uh, moving forward on at this point? Or is it on to the other?
We have two that are, will be coming up very shortly. One is 18 Monver Drive. Um, I'm waiting for a few things on that and I'll be sending out. Um, that is a, um, a house and a, and a lot. And that we're gonna advertise on the town's website, uh, as well as in the, the next grapevine.
Yeah.
Um, of what's available. Um, I had brought that to you before and suggested $65,000 for that. Um, so that would be, we'll be advertising that. We have another one that I have offered, I've had to offer to the former owner as well as there may be things in the house, um, which, um, I've also, I have to give him 90 days to get anything out that he wants. Um, so that is in the process. And finally, um, our property at nine Pana Cook Square, uh, Circle. Circle, I was to square. Um, I have not gotten someone to fix up the fire damage, but that's, that's coming up. And so hopefully we'll be selling that in the fall. And that also needs to be offered to the former owner with a 90-day, um, grace period. So those are the ones we have right now. We haven't really, um, we do have some more lots that we might be looking at, but, um, nothing really right now.
Right, and so it looks like the rest of that is for this building, which would be the stove hoods and the liability coverage.
Yes, if you'll be with me a minute while I get my bearings. Of course, it's the last one. Um, the stove hood, uh, we have two bids on the stove hood. I did ask for a third one, which I have not, um, been able to get yet. And the first one that we got from Hampshire Fire Protection was 2,585 to upgrade the hood suppression system to the current standards and codes. Um, and the next bid I got was from a company called Sentis, which is in Bow. And they quoted about $1,500 to do that job. I think that's a pretty good price.
Oh, man.
Um, would you like to wait for the third bid to see, um, if you want to?
To install the hood.
Who did we ask for the third one?
Um, I offered a company in Franklin, and Wendy, what's the name of that?
Carnell.
Carnell, yeah.
And roughly how long ago did we ask?
Last week.
All right. Um.
Gee, I don't know, because, you know, this will be a public record. So if they don't, they can look at this and bid lower if they want it.
That's true.
Hmm.
Very nice. What's new while I'm awake?
See, I hadn't thought of that, but that's true. And because it's not really a bid that needs a quote, so.
And we did request the quotes, so which is, A, it's not over 10,000. But even if it were, the requesting of multiple quotes would have fulfilled our O B of, of that. So I would be in favor of going forward and getting this done since it's a safety issue and it needs to be done before the town hall can be used with the kitchen.
Right.
And how soon did they say?
I have not gone, I haven't asked them yet.
Okay. Just, you know, a quote of 1,500, but they can't do it for six months. Not because of that, yeah, but that would be a good question and.
So if the board wanted to go ahead with this, I mean, obviously I'd give them a reasonable amount of time to,
Yeah.
to guarantee that they'd be telling me, well, I can't get there till next summer, but
Yeah.
that's not gonna work.
Right.
Now, does the board have any further comment on this or thoughts?
No, but I'm sure that the group that does a chicken barbecue on their home, they would like to have it, have it fixed so they can make some money in this day and age.
Most likely.
Yeah.
All right, uh, I would make the motion that we accept the lowest, uh, reasonable bid and provided that they are able to do the work in a reasonable timeframe.
Second.
Myself, I.
Ah, I.
All right.
That was easy. Where's the button?
Uh, liability coverage.
That was a letter from the insurance company. And they were telling you, um, insurance companies never really have good news when they send you these letters, but how expensive the insurance is. And they're having trouble, um, due to so many claims as far as cyber problems and property damage caused by cyber problems and, um, unreported property acquisitions, um, vacant structures, the left paid billings, they're having trouble having insurance companies. We're in a pool, an insurance pool, and so they have insurance companies that cover these things. And they really have not given us a figure for our upcoming insurance bills. But I think this was just a, make a place marker, telling us that we're gonna expect an increase. And I'm hoping we'll have a better figure once we get to our budget time.
I was gonna say, is that increase as a expected, like a second half payment? Or is that an increase for expected next year's budget?
Uh, this will be next year's budget and we pay this one for the year.
Okay.
But we are in a three-year, I believe we're in a three-year thing with them.
An agreement as far as the, yes, yes.
So that might save us.
Well, and I think they, I think they write a treaty that's right, and I understand that.
But they just still go up, right? It's like uniforms, you get to sign that little dotted line and they give you good numbers and then all of a sudden, the price increased.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, um, that was, I just wanted you to be aware of the letter from the insurance. Apparently.
All right.
Cool. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments on this?
No.
All right, so moving along, we'll move on to our new business, first which is Town Hall Streams. Um, go ahead, take your leave.
I can't keep this on. I think our question on Town Hall Streams is, when would you like us to cancel it? I think we, we didn't want to cancel it too, we were sure everything, so. I think we just paid the bill to 100.
No, I have one.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going in this one.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I know that we pay monthly, when is the, is it per calendar month? Or is it a, a date within there that we're paying?
I think Wendy has a July bill in there, you know? So it's at the beginning of the month, they send us the bill for that month.
Okay. Um, so this would be effective to, to cancel because we now have our own streaming service. Um, the question would be about the retention. Uh, I know that part of the, at least what was said about the contract with them was that they would retain things for X number of years after recording. Uh, the question I think would be if that is true once we have canceled our continual recording with them. Uh, if that is true, then I think it would make sense to simply cancel, uh, going forward. If that is not true, then I would suggest that we pay for this month so we still have access to pull the previous recordings that we have not yet streamed, that we have not streamed to YouTube to be able to update, upload as part of our own archive to YouTube.
I think I'm too late to cancel for this month. I think we're already obligated for July.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in that case, um, I would suggest that we definitely cancel it for next month. And that we ask the question about retention to know whether Russ and or I need to pull off a pre-existing video to make sure we still have a copy.
Okay.
That is the rest of the board point.
Agreed.
That's fine.
You're the IT guy, that means.
Well, it makes sense. If we're planning on, make sure you have it in office. Move on.
So I would make the motion that we cancel Town Hall Streams effective next month.
Second.
All right, uh, myself, I.
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 Self again.
That was easy.
Yes.
Our next policy review session.
This is on there, um, and it's appropriate that it came up tonight, but we do have several policies. Um, and I think it might be a great time if we took some time and reviewed them and see if any of them need updating. And also I'd like to put them together in a book, what I would call a code book or something like that. That would make it easier, I think, to research them because, um, right now we don't have that and I think it's difficult to track them. So it's, um, that's really why that is on there. And I just wanted your ideas on that, if you thought that was a good idea. And also about reviewing the policies, since we're also working on non-public finance.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, we'll be doing it right when we do it then.
Um, yeah, I, I think it's gonna take us a little bit, because it's a lot of them.
Right, but you can do a little bit of it.
But, yeah, I mean, you could chip on it, yeah.
Review the couple tonight.
Yeah, so they could. You're all set, you're, you're ahead of me.
If you move on from that.
I know that, um, in past years, whether it was library and some others, the auditors had had suggestions of which ones we should basically reaffirm or we can't do.
Hmm.
So, and that was usually based on date. So if you can order them kind of oldest date to forward and we can look at them kind of in that order. And then we could do the reaffirming of it and if appropriate, and or any adjustments if appropriate.
Sure, sure. And, and actually we just, you just renewed, um, investment policy, I believe, earlier this year.
Correct.
So that's, that was one that was recently done. Um, and I thought, I mean, the other part of it is that we also have that, uh, policy as far as, um, both the police and the fire as far as charging for false alarms. Um, and these things get lost if you don't keep track of them.
It's more unless you put together a policy book. You just go grab.
Simple enough, yeah.
Yeah, simple.
Yeah.
Target might have some.
Even I can do that, yeah. Russ won't have to do that.
Say that.
And I know you've also talked about, um, a chance to go over kind of policy with the various committees, boards.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Um, what I've done in the past, and that lies, in the spring, of course, that wasn't during COVID, um, when new officers came and were, new people were appointed to boards, um, we used to do maybe a dinner or something, get everyone together. And, um, first of all, so everyone could meet each other that you know, or have some social time. But also then we'd invite someone in either from the municipal association or anyone else who I could get to come for free, um, to give a, to give a rundown on the right to know law and what board members really need to do. I know Marla, you went to the select board training and they kind of know that. But a lot of people don't have that opportunity, um, on other boards. And, and I think it's very helpful, um, to keep us all, do what we need to do. So, um, I'd like to kind of think about that in the fall, um, pull something together. So I'd like to kind of think about that in the fall, pull something together.
That's great, yeah.
That's good.
And probably, you know, summer's not a good time to do it, but October or so might be a good time.
Yeah.
We could have a dinner downstairs. Russell will be doing all the cooking. It doesn't have to be fancy, but I think it'd be, it'd be nice, so. Thanks, Dave, for reminding me.
All right, any further questions on that or comments? All right, I think that's great and we'll move on to the next one, which is timber tax warrants.
Do you want to talk about that?
So we've received two reports of cuts, one was for an extension and one was for a filed order this year. So I just have the summaries here. I just gave the board to sign them to my meeting so that I can submit awards to the tax collector. Both were filed on time.
And were we.
We were, yeah, we were gonna ask the board, other than something like the doomage situation, I don't see that we really need to bring these to put you at a meeting, but just have you sign them.
Yeah, I think it's good to review though, just to make sure that, you know, we're not, do you just, what do you just take the middle row, no, as a, as a stomach rate?
The stomach rate, they're usually supposed to report that themselves.
Who?
Where the stomach rates go.
No, no, no.
No, stomach, you're talking about the D R A numbers from their website. So they post certain periods of time, so for example.
So you use the middle, you take the middle number, not the high and the low?
So it goes by the high and the low and then you do the timber assessment worksheet, which is they're supposed to provide me about the access and that. I put those into the table formula that they provide and it tells me what the rating would be if I cut and then that, but it goes with the Excel spreadsheet and it pumps out the numbers.
Yeah.
The only time it gets a little tricky is when they don't submit that sheet.
Right.
And then I usually call Rick or somebody up there to ask them. And that's only happened once.
Yeah, it doesn't do a dart in the wall. No, no, the reason I ask that is just of many, many years of filing reports. Some towns take the highest number, as you can. Some towns, you know, I had one town send it back to me and took my rating sheet and changed it. So, so I'm just saying, that's why I'm asking.
So the only time I would do the ratings is if they didn't provide me with the rating sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I went to train somebody in Annover that didn't know how to do them because I was doing them here, they always billed fifty percent across the board. And I said, you can't do that. You have to know where the timber came from, how big a cut it is, what the accessibility is, what the quality is. So then they stopped that, but it took me to convince them that's something.
Right, right, but that's just, that would be the only reason I would say that, otherwise.
We're from one of those towns that always did the highest, personally told us it's a problem, yeah, always.
But I've never had somebody change my rating sheet and I did that. That was weird.
So it sounds like we can be reviewing these when we sign them, but since it's just a straight formula, we can just sign it and not worry about it unless we're talking.
We did discuss having a signing session at the end of the meeting, it's much like we did the town's variable appeal and that stuff. Andrew, everything at the end, we signed everything.
We're gonna have a lot of fun at the end of the meeting.
Oh, yeah, the odd specific. Yeah, we need stamps.
All right. I wish we had them here, but I guess we move on to member appointments.
Yeah, we have the Forest Fire Warden, who also happens to be the town's emergency management director, Robert Walensky, was in and he brought me some big work. And he has expressed interest in being, I believe that's actually the state that appoints him, but they need the town to approve who they are considering. He is our Forest Fire Warden, as well as some other individuals who are firefighters and he's updated his appointments and so I just.
Means that Wallace has got backup.
Yes, exactly. So in other words, if he's not available, they could go to Emma, for example, or someone else that would be authorized by the state to issue fire permits. So they're looking for the town to recommend the above persons. I have put this on SharePoint. I don't know if you saw it.
I'm gonna have so much fun.
But there, I don't see anyone on here that there was any reason that you shouldn't.
No, I think he's well called.
He was the chief in town for a while, but he's a real firefighter in Manchester.
He is.
He's been the Forest Fire Warden increasingly as well.
He's a great guy.
I think he's the current one, they're just looking to.
He is, yeah, he is, and he is, he is a good person.
So do you need a motion or?
So I guess whether it's a motion or maybe, I don't, maybe they don't need that, but I do need to sign this form so I can get to them.
Okay, wanna make a legal, I'll make a motion that we have Robert Walensky as the, whatever he's gonna do.
As our fire department. Yeah, this week, yeah.
I'll second that. And so myself, aye.
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 All right. And then Warner River Advisory Committee.
Warner River can have up to, I believe, four members from Webster and we have one member on there. It's Dan Moran, who was our, we just recommended that. And again, this is disappointed by the, the local river management, New Hampshire Rivers Management Protection Program. This is the nomination form. We've gotten interest for George Embley on Gulf Road to, he's expressed interest to be appointed to that. Dan also sent to me, says that would be, that'd be great because he's the one that got me involved in Warner River Advisory. So, and he's done it, he's done it before. So again, that's similar to the last thing, that's going to require signatures of support of having him appointed.
It's much more nice when you know who you're appointing.
Yes.
I know.
Yeah.
Nice guy. And his wife does things for Sally and she does things for the town also. Don't volunteer, you can't let them know.
That's right.
So I would move that we support the appointment of Mr. Embley to the Warner River Advisory Committee.
Second.
Myself, aye.
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 All right, moving on, correspondence from Mr. Sansucci.
I think I wanted you to see this just because it's the time of year that we require documents from our utilities. And so he has drafted what he wants from them and I go ahead and put him on the letterhead and sent it along and they send him the information.
So this is his request for utility information.
Exactly, exactly.
And why's he want that?
He does that every year so that he can assess the utilities.
He's our utility assessor.
It's almost like.
I didn't know that was a utility assessor.
It's almost like, you know how the town has the inventories and information for that? While this isn't, while this isn't like that, it is, it is.
With tax.
Just getting, just getting updated information.
Okay.
Well, that moves us on to public comment of which they have all left.
There's Mark.
So select four motions. We have our draft minutes to look at.
Can I, can I ask something for, and then I'll wait, maybe I'll just sign you.
Yes, please, but let's, let's make sure.
I have a, I have a suggestion about the extra stove in the basement that was donated by Michelle. And I was wondering if it would be appropriate to offer her to take it back or to ask her if she minded if Dee put an ad in the paper that if anybody needed an electric stove, that there was one available because it's in working condition, there's nothing wrong other than she, you know, downsized with homes. And I don't want to see it to disappear like the other stove in the kitchen, but I do, you know, think that if there's somebody in need in the town, it would be a nice offer. But I want to make sure that we go through the right channel because it was donated to begin with from Michelle Derby.
She does not want that, I've asked.
You're not one of those, yeah, really.
Yeah, but I do want to go against her if we didn't offer it that way, but.
And the other stove that disappeared, Wendy, I had a little, that stove.
I know, you did a good job, but I don't, I don't think Mr. Little leads another one, especially one that works. So I thought maybe Dee could put it in the tailor. I just, you know, I think.
Just gotta write me in.
But you don't tell what it is.
Okay, sure.
That was my.
And that's like you, like somebody that's in need or?
Yeah, somebody that needs an electric stove, you know, if a stove goes to something, you know, we have it, it was donated to us, so we wouldn't sell it to somebody else, we'd give it away.
Yeah, I think that's great, crisis right.
I guess we'd get out of the basement.
We can't take it in the middle of the night and throw it on someone's lawn.
No, you shouldn't do that, somebody might arrest you.
I would suggest that we get in writing from Michelle that she doesn't want it before we do that. Sounds fine to me. Do we need any sort of motion for that at this point?
I don't think so, I wouldn't think so.
Thank you.
Would you like to write on me?
I will, yes.
All right, so since it was handed to me as an actual copy, I'll look at, I'll look at the sealed non-public minutes first from our last meeting. Now we can end it. And so the question with you, do we have any amendments or comments that need to be made so we can influence the non-public if we need to, to discuss them? I do not notice anything that I believe needs to be changed.
I don't, I don't.
All right, so I would move that we accept the non-public select work meeting minutes that were sealed on June twenty first, twenty twenty one, as submitted.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, and that moves us along to our normal meeting minutes. You know, I brought up someplace, there we go. And so those are the normal meeting minutes from Monday, June twenty first, twenty twenty one. Now, let's see, oh, I'll try it.
Don't worry about me with grammar, but, but I do have something that I just, just 'cause I feel very, I feel very strong, well, just because I didn't.
Conserves easements, conservation commission appointment, town owned properties, the live streaming policy, the emergency relief fund, sealed minutes, the dog and timber taxes and warrants, and then generic comments and motions. And since you mentioned that you had a comment or correction, please go ahead.
Just in the part that the, that the board discussed doomage and agreed to sign, I, I didn't.
Where did you, where did you, where's that?
Which page is that?
Um, oh, three.
Three, three, okay.
So it just needs to be noted that.
Yeah, that I didn't sign or did I agree?
So I did.
It'd add a bit, I don't even know if it's a big deal, I just didn't want it.
I mean, I always put it in whenever it's just a generic, you're gonna sign it, you know, or discuss and then.
She won't ask for a vote that indicates that she voted, no?
Was there a vote? There was a vote.
Yeah, but I didn't sign it.
But she didn't sign.
Right, because I did agree.
Did not sign.
If someone did.
Is that what you wanted to do?
Yeah, yeah, that's it, that's it.
I'll just say the board agreed to sign with my.
Right, that's fine. And now it's still, yes, that's fine, that's fine, I just.
Oh, it's, it's okay.
I just, well, I would say to, I would just say I want it to be noted that I didn't agree.
The board discussed the doomage and Dee and David agreed to sign.
That's fine, that works.
All right. Oh, I, I have one. I didn't think I did.
Sorry, it's amended, it's with the.
But it's page four, line ten, I'm just gonna go, the name is not spelled correctly.
Great.
Good thing you don't have red pen.
More work?
No, my secretary takes one, anything I do. I said, does it have to be red?
All right, any further comments, corrections or questions on this?
No, that's all right, because I think I put these in the newspaper because I found Google.
I'm sure you would have put them in.
I changed, no, you're right, but I changed it, I'm gonna go, I knew that was a mistake, so.
So, so you've already printed in the grapevine?
Yeah, I think it is, I'm pretty sure I put this one in. Charter of the hotel, today I just don't, but it's always draft, yeah.
So we can make any changes. All right.
All right, so I would move that we accept the minutes from Monday, June twenty second, twenty twenty one, as amended.
Second.
Myself, aye.
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 All right. And we are almost done. Trustees, trust funds.
You have that.
Oh, you're fine, no, no, you're fine, no, you're fine. No, I'm not, it's only this.
Oh, that makes it easy.
I don't want, oh, God, I don't want.
Alex, can I get a little, she gives up, it's a long one, the buyer's not in.
I don't mind if I don't want.
So all the questions from trustees. And so I would move that we request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of nine thousand three hundred fifty five dollars and ninety cents payable to B H B for invoice zero three four six zero two seven for professional engineering services for close pin bridge replacement project. These funds to be withdrawn from the bridge and corporate capital reserve fund.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Requested, I would request that the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars payable to Computech Integrators for the payment of invoices five nine three nine eight in the amount of three thousand three hundred twenty dollars for the live streaming camera system for public meetings and invoice five nine five zero three in the amount of four hundred and eighty dollars for additional hard drive memory space for the town office server. These funds to come from the technology expendable trust fund.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
I would request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of five hundred seven dollars and fifty nine cents payable to Boscombe Sand and Revel for quarry pack for the road project on Concord Drive. These funds to come from the highways and roads capital reserve fund.
Second.
All in favor, aye. And I would request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of one thousand thirteen thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents payable to lease the flower farm invoices number six four five zero for four thousand seven hundred eighty five dollars, invoice six thousand four hundred fifty, invoice six four five one for three thousand four hundred seventy dollars, invoice six four five two for two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and invoice six four five six for two thousand seven hundred two dollars and fifty cents. These funds are to come from the highway and roads capital reserve fund.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
We've never knew that part.
That's true.
I get second over here.
I've just been going down through this. All right, that concludes all of these. Does, do any of the board members have further questions, comments or other items they wish to address?
Signing things.
No, we gotta sign a million things, right?
All right, so I would move to close this meeting at nine thirty five.
Oh, my God, second.
Aye.
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 Thank you all for joining us and I will be ending the recording.
Okay.